Okay, it is officially 6:30. It is 6:30 on October 8th, 2019, and I am calling this meeting to order. We have a full dais, and as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, reassess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. So, we have called this meeting to order. Happy to have a full dais tonight, and we are very privileged to once again have our Navy Junior ROTC will be giving us the pledges. They'll be making a presentation. If everyone will please stand.
(inaudible) 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 Cadet flag? Sir, this cadet's cadet flag is... I am the Navy Junior ROTC, I always try to fight myself and make my stand as a school pro, I am the official United States of America, I am a loyal Navy driver. I didn't hide, I didn't conceal, I always do what I should do. I always think about my actions, I always try to resist it. I work hard, I prove my highest rank in my life. I was seeking manly leadership, standing there for 400,000 people. Hoorah! (applause)
Okay, I know you guys are trying to... I want you to come forward and turn around because I'm gonna talk about you. So you've gotta come forward and turn around. The audience wants to look at you. So Sam Stewart, raise your hand, Sam, so they know who you are. Sam Stewart is a senior, and Sam is headed to the Navy.[147.06][147.06](applause) Paulina is also a senior. Raise your hand, Paulina. Paulina was the homecoming queen, and Paulina plans to go to Texas State and major in community We also have Alex. Raise your hand, Alex. And Roberto. Raise your hand, Roberto. And they are both juniors, and I failed to ask them what they plan on doing when they graduate, but they still have a year to decide. I don't know about you guys, but seeing these young people gives me a lot of faith for tomorrow. Let's give 'em another round of applause.[188.84][188.84](applause) Okay, you guys can... Their commanding officers are in the back. If they would please raise their hand, I'd like to give their commanding officers a round of applause as well.[226.84][226.84](applause) Thank you very much. If you'll remain standing, Chaplain Sparks will give us our invocation tonight.
Let us pray. Fathers, we have a moment of silence to memorialize the life that recently was lost. We just call for your peace that passes understanding to be with the family and with everyone who is there and all the first responders, that you would comfort the hearts and that you would heal the broken-hearted. And whatever our part is in doing that, let us know it and be quick to do it in the power of your Holy Spirit. Lord God, we thank you for every good gift that you've given us, because we know it comes down from you, and everything you've given us is good. We thank you for wisdom. We thank you for godly government. Let everything that's done in this place be in accord with your will, and give us a desire to always know your will and to accomplish it here on earth even as it is in heaven with your power. Thank you for your grace bestowed upon us. Thank you for the life of your son. Thank you for your love manifest toward us. Lord, we ask that you bless every family represented here and every family in this community in this county with your peace and with your joy. And where are things that need to be corrected, Lord, that you would correct them? And, Lord, that you would root out evil from among us? And we thank you for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Chaplain. You may all be seated. All right, we're moving on to Item 4A, my mayor's report. And as Chaplain Sparks mentioned, we've had just a horrible tragedy in our community this weekend, and it's really tough to know the right thing to say and the right thing to do. And I just truly appreciate our first responders and all of the folks that were involved in that, and I would just ask that everyone keep the family and everybody involved in their hearts. And sometimes things balance out, and I want to tell you about some really good news of something that happened in our community. I get all kinds of emails and phone calls, and I got an email from a woman that was explaining that she had an elderly mother who lived with her, the air conditioner was out, she couldn't afford an air conditioner, she wasn't sure if the city could help her, but please, was there something that I could do? And so I... Sheila Lowe's in the audience, and I sent to Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery, and I sent out to Community Action. And to cut to the bottom of this story, I finally figured out she was in Bastrop, Louisiana, not in Bastrop, Texas. I thought since she was emailing me, she might know where I was and she was. But... So I called Sheila back and said, "Never mind, I don't think we can help her." And I called Kelly Frankie back with Combined Community Action and said, "Kelly, she's in Bastrop, Louisiana." And within 10 minutes, I got this email, and Kelly had reached out to the woman and said the following. "I received an email about assistance for you from the mayor of Bastrop, Texas. She realized you live in Bastrop, Louisiana, and I can help you." And she provided her a number and an agency that would take care of her. So we have folks that not only take care of people in Bastrop, Texas, take care of folks in Bastrop, Louisiana. And that is why we do community support for organizations like Combined Community Action. Let's give Kelly Frankie a round of applause.[498.47][498.47](applause) Just restores my faith. It made me very, very happy. All right, if we go to pictures, speaking of Sheila Lowe, there's a wonderful picture of her. We had a great emergency preparedness event. I believe in Chief... Correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm the only one that did the shoulder roll out of the window of the blow-up burn house. Is that true? Certainly the only one my age that was doing that. But you can see some pictures of the police, the fire were out there. It was a really great event, and I appreciate everybody that was involved in that. You can back up, Colin, and I'll just talk about all of these real quick. I went to Dan Rose's ribbon cutting for Aflac, and he is, I think, almost tired of the duck jokes, but he was very good-natured about it. I did attend the best of Bastrop County, and that... What a wonderful event. I must point out that our own council member, Drusilla Rogers, won for the 16th year in a row. 16th year in a row. Let's give her a round of applause.[558.16][558.16](applause) We've had yet another open house to talk about our codes and the B-3 Come and Go meeting. You see that Mayor Pro Tem Nelson straightening out some transportation folks, so that was an interesting conversation to be a part of. And we also, in Bastrop, hosted our TML Region 10 meeting, and sometimes they have legislators come and talk, and sometimes they have a motivational speaker. And what we did was a 20-minute excerpt of Connor McAnally's play about Texas, and it was very well received. And I believe our city manager, who's always doing marketing, I think you said you thought you sold two season tickets to the Opera House from some folks that were there that didn't realize we had a theater, and so that's what it's all about, and that's why we host those types of events. And Rick Brackett, there was a reception for Rick Brackett. He was one of the founding members of the Visit Bastrop Board, and he is now going to be off the board, but there was a reception held for him that I attended, and we wish Rick the very best as he goes forward. On the planned events, the one thing that I'll point out, just a couple of things. National Night Out was a huge success. Congratulations to Officer McIntyre. I believe she was challenged to come up with nine events, and we ended up having 12, so she did a great job, and it was a really busy night. And Chief Altgeld and I stuck to the schedule, and I think we hit seven out of the 12. We did our best. The Chamber Luncheon, Pro Tem Senator Watson was the keynote speaker, and we recognized the first responders. It was a great event. The Arby's ribbon cutting, I know they did $80,000 in a week, which is more than any other Arby's. So I guess you Bastropians like your Arby's, because you set records for their first weekend business. And the TML Annual Conference is in San Antonio. In fact, that's where Councilmember Jackson and I were at 2 o'clock today, and we will be heading back to San Antonio when this meeting is over. If you go to the next slide, just a reminder that the Autumn Big Sit is coming up this weekend. It's on Saturday from 7:00 to 3:00, so come learn how to enjoy and appreciate our birds. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that I've got a few meetings, and then we'll be back at City Council on the 22nd. So that is the end of my mayor's report. Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything to share with us tonight? Councilmember Rogers? Mayor Pro Tem Nelson? Councilmember Ennis?
No ma'am.
Councilmember Jackson?
Just two quick things. I really did enjoy the National Night Out as well, and...
(inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Good evening. This ma'am wanted to give an update on the lawnmower similar. We had... We think that the public government started coming in and getting through a comment and indicated that Tuesday, September 24th, however, we've been contacted by the public administration state of services, surveillance, exception, warning, and we expect that the size of the case has been claimed as to their additional expenses, they need to find the fire above the current local authorized facility. And so it's now Wednesday, and it's clear that the state cleared their public statement. They are out of the pits. They have been drawn there, and they noticed to see and they're working this way. And so once all of that gets through, it's back to the local district plan, we'll be keeping up to date with the situation. That's it?
All right, we're moving on, and we've got two proclamations tonight. The first one is regarding National Friends of Libraries Week. You are involved with the library.
Great. (inaudible) Couple of board members. That is a board that I'm a liaison to. Ms. Jenkins, I'm looking at you. You know I see you. Come on. All right. Yes. Come look at you, turn around so they can see you, miss me. All right. All right. Whereas Friends of the Bastrop Public Library raise money and volunteer their time, thus providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for the children's summer reading program, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of a lifelong learning and connect with thoughts and ideas of others from the past to the present and around the world. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of community support for libraries and work to ensure that our library has the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through the 26th as Friends of Libraries Week. Let's give them a round of applause.[934.44][934.44](applause) All right. Our Friends of the Library do just phenomenal things. And Becca, we had a board meeting last night, and Becca was telling us that she had an opportunity to have a booth at the Governor's Small Business Workshop, and several folks didn't realize that there were resources at our library, and they ended up with like 25 people visiting them to get resources. And that's all about starting small business, and all of us know, we all need all the help we can get. So our library really served a fantastic purpose, and we're so proud of them. All right, I'm moving on to Item 4E, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Ms. Jackson, do you want to take over your presentation?
To the mayor, council, and city manager, thank you for having us again this year. Usually, we give you an update on the partnership with the city and other entities in Bastrop, and we talk to you about services. This year, we wanted to give you another perspective, and we brought together what, a group of young people that have been working with us since April in our multimedia project under one of our grants. They want to show, tell you, and show you the effects that domestic violence has in the home. And so that's what they're gonna be doing tonight. There are three members of the prevention ed team here that work with these young people all the time. Jujie Tomshere, Mertha Torres, and Jennifer Franks. And I'm gonna let Mertha come now and introduce these young people and what they're gonna do, and we're gonna be as brief as I usually am.
My team members and I have been the facilitators for the multimedia project with these young ladies for the past couple of months. The four narratives you will be hearing each have a title we assign them. The first one is The Overachiever presented by J.C. Baker. She is portraying your typical A-plus student. She works extra hard and participates in community service to avoid problems among her parents back home. Casey Baker will be presenting The Abused Child, which is your ordinary student who lives a double life, at home and at school because of the abuse she faces. Kaylee Baker is the voice of all the children who question their parents on why they stayed. The last narrative will be presented by Perry Lowe. She is the student who just moved into shelter and is thankful to be away from the violence. Maya Lowe will be presenting images from real survivors of domestic violence. Each drawing has some words attached said by the survivors.
I'm never going to make it through this semester. I gotta be on my report card. I tried to explain to my teacher that this must have been a mistake, but he insisted that it would be okay. And I was one of his best students. I had received an A- on my last test, and three other people scored higher than me. I don't know what to do. I can't show my mom. I have to ace my AP exams. My friends and teachers won't like me if I don't. I've been studying so hard that I was only able to do three volunteer hours at the animal shelter last week, and that's not enough. I need to excel. I need to be the best. Once I'm the best, my parents won't fight anymore. My dad won't blame my mom for my failures and hurt her. We can all be happy again. I need to show both of them how great I am. I need to be perfect.
I walk into my classroom wondering if my teachers or friends will notice. Dad and mom were arguing again last night, and things got so bad. I barely slept, and I didn't study for today's exam. My arms hurt so much this morning while I was getting dressed, and they hurt even more now whenever I raise my hand. I'm trying to keep the pain to myself, but the bruises dad left really hurt this time. I can just imagine how my mom feels today. She got it worse after he was done with me. I wish my friends didn't come too close or gave me hugs. It just hurts so much. I say I'm sore from working out, but really, I'm tired from last night. I hope the rest of the day gets better, and then I'm able to sleep tonight.
I know dad had been drinking last night. He's pure evil when he does. You say he'll get better, but last night was the worst night ever. I couldn't handle it anymore. I had to call 911. I'm sorry, Mom. I'm so sorry. I couldn't handle seeing and hearing it anymore. I thought we were finally gonna be set free. Why, Mom? Why did you beg the police officer to let him go? Why did you want him to stay? Why did... You told him he was a good person. Why would you do that? I don't know what to do. I'm sorry, Mom. I thought I was doing the right thing.
I'm so glad we left Friday. Mom says we'll never have to see her boyfriend again. He was one of the worst, but I also still worry. I know we are safe now. I know that we are surrounded by people who care. I can finally breathe when I hear the door open to our room here at the shelter. I don't have to worry about who is on the other side. They have been so kind. I'm still worried about today. I don't have my backpack or my homework from over the weekend. How will I explain that to my teachers? The people here were nice enough to get me a new backpack with some supplies for today, but I still really want my hoodie and the pictures of us with Grandma from last Christmas. I don't know how school will go today, but at least I know that when I leave school, I'll be coming back to a safe place. At least I know that now, finally.
Students with these same stories and thoughts walk the halls of our schools every day, though many are not aware. We thank you for your support and your time. Thank you.[1344.73][1344.73](applause)
Okay, so the proclamation says, "Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. Whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States for one year, this adds up to more than 10 million women and men. Whereas in 15 states, more than 40% of all homicides of women in each state involve an intimate partner violence. Whereas 85% of domestic violence victims are female and 15% are male. Whereas nearly half of all men and women in the U.S. will experience psychological aggression by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Whereas nationally, 50% of batterers who abuse their intimate partners also abuse their children. Whereas the most cases of domestic violence are never reported to the police. Whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, Mayor Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month." Ms. Jackson, thank you so much for the work that the Family Crisis Center does in our community. Thank you.[1464.53][1464.53](applause) Glad that you guys take care of each other and take care of us. Okay, as I read at the beginning, I get to move the agenda around, and I am going to do that, and I have been asked to take Item 9C... Sorry, Colin. Individual consideration, Item 9C. It's on page, at the top of Page 3 of the agenda. It has to do with Friendship Bible Baptist Church. So I... We are moving to 9C. There we go. Thank you. Conduct public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2019-47 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas granting a conditional use permit for the expansion of a church used for Friendship Bible Baptist Church in Friendship Bible subdivision located at 1903 Pecan Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas as attached in Exhibit A and Exhibit B, setting out conditions, including a severability clause and establishing an effective date, and move to include on the October 22nd consent agenda. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So this request is to expand the existing building by adding a foyer to the front of the building, and then classrooms, office space, and a kitchen to the northeast corner of the existing building at 1903 Pecan Street. They're also planning to add a paved parking lot along the roads around the building. So you can see the location of this site is they've got actually three road frontages on Pecan, Hawthorne, and Jefferson Street. The zoning for this area is currently SF-7, single-family 7. The proposed place type in the new code will be civic space, which allows for church developments. Their conceptual site plan for the conditional use permit shows how they're gonna add on to the building. The white area is the existing building and the foyer at the front and the classroom and kitchen space in the back. And then they show an angled parking lot around the perimeter with landscaping for screening along the road frontages. You can see more clearly what's existing, what's to be added on the site. They've also provided the conceptual elevations that will be eventually part of their site development plan. In the current code, the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit with five criteria that entail the use being harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood and mitigating any nuisances, which this development plan's to do. It's adhering to all the setbacks. The lot was recently plotted, so all those are established on the plot. The Funding Zoning Commission met at the regular meeting on September 26th and recommended approval of the conditional use permit. So the recommendation of staff and the P&amp;Z is to approve the conditional use, and the applicant is here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. We will be conducting a public hearing, but council, do you have any questions for Ms. Bills? All right, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'm officially closing the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions, sir? Do you wish to speak to the applicant?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to congratulate Reverend Butler on the hard work in that this... The fact that you're having to expand your church, that's really wonderful news.
The summer programs that you provide for the community, it warms my heart. I know that's why there's classroom space and kitchen and all that. Just outstanding. Just really, I've enjoyed the times that I've visited there. Any other comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Friendship Bible Baptist.[1739.13][1739.13](applause) Okay, now we're going back to Page 2, except that's really kind of a little bit of a lie. I have, was asked by one of the council members to go into executive session as soon as we can, and I know for sure we will be discussing Item 10B. Council, if we're gonna go to executive session, you want to just get them both done at the same time? Or do you want to go for Item 10B and then do 10A later? I don't have a strong thought. Anyone care?
Do them both or do one?
Do them both. We're doing them both. Okay, so that, and I have to know, because I have to read them. All right, we will be going into executive session to discuss Item 10A. City Council shall convene and... City Council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of outstanding easements on Main Street. And Item 10B, City Council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with City Attorney regarding the status of the building Bastrop codes. When we come out of executive session, we will do Item Number 11 and take any action if it's required, and then we will be moving to Work Session Item 5C. Just so everybody knows what's going on. So it is 7:01, and we are in executive session. There's some bio breaks going on, so it'll be just a real quick session... Second. Hey, we didn't lose anybody. Okay, it is 8:08, and we are out of executive session. On Item 10A, there is... There was no action taken. And on 10B, there was no formal action taken, but there was a decision made that I want to share with you. And what we are going to do, as many of you know, if we start with Item 9E, 9E, 9F, 9G, 9H, 9I, 9J, 9K, and 9L, the whole rest of the agenda, those all come together in a package. So what we have decided that we are going to do, many of those that... Of the items that I've listed start with, hold a public hearing. Many of you are here because you got a letter that said we would be doing two public hearings. We are going to hold the public hearing tonight on each one of those items. But Counsel has, for a number of reasons, some of which we will be sharing with you later, will become very evident later, we are postponing the first reading of the ordinance until October 22nd. So what was gonna happen was we were gonna have a public hearing, and we were gonna vote on the first reading of the ordinance on October 8th. Then we were gonna hold the second public hearing on October 22nd and vote on the second reading of the ordinance. We're Bastrop, and we like to do things our own way. We are going to have the first public hearing on October 8th. On October 22nd, we are going to have the second public hearing, as we posted, and we are going to have a vote on the first reading of the ordinance. Then on November 7th, we are going to have the second reading of the ordinance. There will be no posted public hearing, but because we live in Texas and it is a certified agenda, if someone wants to speak on November 7th, you absolutely can sign up for that agenda item. Is that somewhat clear? Everybody kinda... Okay, I'm getting some nods, yes. So that's a decision, and I want everyone to know that. And so the next thing that I will tell you that we have agreed that we are going to do is we are going to go to Item 5C. I'm gonna do that with 5C. They're helping me make sure I don't forget anything. We're gonna go to 5C. Poor Colin, I make sure he stays awake back there. It is a Work Session, and it is Discuss Bastrop Building Codes Technical Manual and Pattern Book. Many of you may or may not be aware, so I wanna make sure we are... Our city manager likes to say the words abundantly clear. We wanna make sure everyone knows. On Main Street, people got notices, "You're P3." "No, you're P4." And that did not go off so well. We, as Counsel, have decided... Matt, they're trying to see me. You might wanna sit down. The... On Main Street, if you are currently zoned residential, your new zoning that would be... That is proposed is going to be P3 residential. The only P4 zoning that is going to be on Main Street is Tracy Store and the Apartments, because they have a different type of zoning now. Yes, I know Brenda Abbott has a florist shop. Here's the details on that. Her prop... That property is zoned residential with a conditional use permit that allows her to have that use. So she... When her... Because her property is currently zoned residential, in the new codes, she will be P3, and she will have a... She'll be nonconforming, because she will be using... Running something commercial in a P3. She has the ability to come and request... Whoever owns the property can come and request to be a P4, and then she would be completely compliant if she was awarded P4 zoning. But because she has got that use going now, and because she is currently zoned residential, she'll be P3 and allowed to continue that use. Does that make sense? Okay, I'm getting mostly yeses. So if you are here because you heard that City Council had made all of Main Street P4, that is not the case. I know that you trust me, but you don't have to just trust me. You can go to our website, go to the Interactive Code Map, and you can zoom in on any piece of property along Main Street, and it will show you who owns the property, what their current zoning is, and that the proposed zoning is P3. Okay? So I'm considering we have addressed Main Street. And each one of the council members got several wonderful phone calls from our citizens who lived along Main Street and maybe didn't live on Main Street, but absolutely wanted to make sure that it was gonna stay P3 residential. And that is absolutely... We heard you. That change is made. That being said, I know that there were some discussions that we all love Tracy Store, and there may be another point along Main Street that someone might like to have a Tracy Store. That possibility still exists, because a property owner can come apply for P4 zoning, and they'd have to bring their site plan, and we would notify all the people around them, and we would go through all of the same process, that each and every property owner is assured by Texas law, you can request a zoning change. That's just... That's how this works. So that's Main Street. The other thing that we have gotten an opportunity to visit about quite a bit is the L.C.R.A. property. And we realize that it is neighborhood tourism. We know that it has been on the market since July of 2018. And the other thing that every person sitting up here with me knows, we do not own that property. So with that, we are going to let... I've got four people signed up to speak, and... We can really go ahead with the... So one... Today, Counsel, myself and everyone on Counsel got a letter from L.C.R.A., got an email from them. And I would like to let Mark Sumrell. He has signed up to speak, and I would like to give him... You can come on up, Mark. And Mark's gonna tell us his name and his address, and he's going to read a statement, and I think this may help clarify a lot of things. And we're gonna get it all done tonight, but I'm just trying to do things in order. Hi, Mark, how are ya?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Schrader, and members of City Council. Thank you for your time this evening.
Can you guys hear him?
Oh. Is that better? I'll lean... I'll lean lower. Again, Mayor Schrader, thank you for the time this evening. And members of City Council, I appreciate your time. I'm Mark Sumrell. I'm the Director of Real Estate Services for L.C.R.A. My address there is 3505 Montopolas Drive in Austin, Texas. Earlier today, I emailed you a letter clarifying L.C.R.A.'s position regarding the proposed zoning designation of the Riverside Conference Center site. I would like to read the body of the letter here tonight. As you know, L.C.R.A. owns the Riverside Conference Center, an approximately ten-acre site at 1506 Wilson Street in Bastrop. After determining the property is no longer needed, L.C.R.A. staff listed the property for sale in July of 2018. This letter is to clarify L.C.R.A.'s position regarding the zoning designation of Place Type 4-Mix, P4-Mix, proposed for the Riverside Conference Center site. L.C.R.A. supports the proposed change to P4-Mix for the Riverside site. The P4-Mix designation is the only like-for-like zoning designation in the Building Bastrop Initiative. That is, P4-Mix is the closest designation to the property's current zoning. As always, L.C.R.A. works to be a good neighbor to residents and to the city of Bastrop as a whole. We would be happy to meet with neighborhood residents to hear their concerns. However, L.C.R.A. would not support any zoning designation that is more restrictive than the P4-Mix as it is currently proposed. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sumrell. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate you coming, and I know it's 8:15, and it's been a long day for you. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So Counsel had received Mark's email. We were aware of what he just read to you guys. That is one of the reasons that we are putting off the first reading of the ordinance till the 22nd. And if there are neighbors that would like to meet with Mark, you now have a face and a name, and I'm sure that L.C.R.A.'s happy to visit with you guys, but we will be moving forward on October 22nd. So with that, Counsel, do you have any other questions or comments? So the other thing that we want to talk about on the Building Bastrop codes was, we wanna make sure that we have any policy discussions of any changes that Counsel wants to make. What you saw in the packet, those of you who read the packet that was posted on Friday for today's meeting, from a staff standpoint, I don't think anybody's saying that it's 1,000% perfect. I... When I was a design engineer, I always wanted to design the perfect set of plans, and you just... You just never get to that point. But they are good to go. They are ready. One of the things that we've had a discussion about, we know that we said we would review these codes on an annual basis. One of the... One idea that I've talked with, and Counsel, I'm happy for your input, we talked about maybe instead of waiting a whole year, the first year, maybe we take another look at it in six months. Let's see how they work. Everybody gets some more chance to read through them. We've all read them. We've all compared all the notes. We've had... I've lost track of how many design rodeos, and we had to... Some people showed up for rodeos, thinking there were gonna be horses and cattle, but we got through that. So we've had lots of rodeos, lots of input. We've tried to make sure that we've captured all of that and addressed all of that. But we're not saying that if there's not some refinement that needs to be made, we're certainly willing to do that. But there's a point that you can't refine it if you don't finalize something. So, City Manager, I believe Counsel sent you some things that they wanted to visit with. So at this point, let's let her go through the items that have been submitted to her. And then Counsel, if you have any other items that you want to visit about, we'll continue to workshop on those. So, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Like you said, there were just...
I am so sorry, Matt. I am so, so sorry. There are three other people signed up to speak, and I believe I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, most of this is about the L.C.R.A. property. Do we wanna go ahead and have the three other speakers and kind of finish that conversation? Okay. So Colin, hang with me. We're going to 9F. I am opening the public hearing. I have to read 9F, because that's part of the rules. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of the Ordinance Number 2019-51, but we've already agreed we're gonna put that off till October 22nd, of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, and enforcement, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meaning, and move to include on the October 22nd agenda for a second reading. I have to read it the way it was written, but we are going to put that off. I have three folks signed up to speak, and the first one is Joe Grady Tuck. If you would please tell us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to address us tonight. Mr. Tuck?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Member, City Manager. My name is Joe Grady Tuck. I'm a seventh-generation resident of Bastrop County. I live at 1503 Wilson Street. Bought my house because it is directly across from the Crocheron Mansion. That is where Sam Houston made his anti-secession speech, which was successful in terms of Bastrop not voting for secession back in the 1860s. It's one of the most historic homes in Bastrop. It's the reason I live in my restored historic home. The Bastrop County reminds me of William Faulkner's fictional Yaknapodaw County, in which... Of which he said that history is not dead, is not even in the past. This eleven-acre tract, that is the L.C.R.A. park, is among the most historic sites, and that home is possibly the most historic site in Bastrop County. We ask... The neighbors are unanimous in this. We do not want the property rezoned to P4. Rather, we would ask that it be left alone, just left out of this rezoning property altogether. The current residential tourism is appropriate. It's been in existence since the 1980s, for as long as most people in the neighborhood have been there. We ask that it differs substantially from P4 inasmuch as modification of the form-based zoning. It does not permit apartments. It does not permit multifamily. The P4 allows three-story apartment houses and condos and the like. We are adamantly opposed to that. The Planning and Zoning Meeting was packed with people opposing it. This Council chamber was again packed. The special session winnowed out the crowd somewhat, but I can tell you that the neighborhood is adamantly opposed to this. It's not a... It is not a downzoning. It's exactly what the L.C.R.A. has now. They're gonna sell that property, understand what they wish, if to go to P4, so they hope they can get more money for it. That is not the concern of the neighborhood, nor should it be the concern of this Counsel. We ask that the Counsel leave us alone, leave the zoning exactly the way it is, and we'll be eternally grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck. All right, the next person is Sandra Van Weig... Did I say that right? Wyke, I'm so sorry. Sandra Van Wyke.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. My name's Sandra Van Wyke, and I just recently moved to Bastrop. I live at 1305 Wilson Street, so I'm catty-corner from the property. I can see the property from my front porch. I love Bastrop. We moved here in July. I moved here to open my medical practice, which I have downtown. I chose Bastrop. My husband and I chose Bastrop because of the unique character of this town. We moved from Austin. We moved from Mueller. Many of you are probably familiar with that. It's very much of a P4-type of neighborhood, a very dense neighborhood. And it has so many wonderful qualities to it, but it's not what downtown historic Bastrop is and what we were looking for and what creates the character. I just commend the city for wanting to do this rezoning in the P3 and the P4, and all the plans that I've seen, they just seem fabulous. And I'm really happy that we're in a town that is thinking progressively and wants to do that. But I also think it's very important that we remember what makes Bastrop what Bastrop is. We're not Cedar Park, we're not Buta, we're not just another one of these jam-packed communities that's feeding into Austin. We have a very special character, and our downtown is the heart of that character. And I think it's very important that we consider what we do with that Cochrane property for that. And so I actually have a paper that we presented. So many of the neighbors met together, and I'd like to... So going off some of the things that Mr. Tucker said, we looked at... I actually have a copy of the Form-Based Code with me here, and I have a copy of the new coding that you have. And so, looking very carefully at this, what is most concerning for us is that the new code allows for much more dense property as far as multi-story, three-family apartment buildings. And that does just add to the density and changes how that property would be used. You know, it would be one thing if there was only one small piece, but if we give it P4, then it can be used greatly for that. It could... I mean, if you were gonna maximize the economic benefit of that piece of property, you'd go in there and put as many apartments on there that the coding would allow, and that would totally change what the fabric of that community is. And I'd like to read something. This is part of the Form-Based Code 2015. Under the definition of neighborhood tourism, it says, "This designation within the neighborhood character zone applies to the tourism-oriented property. Any future redevelopment in this area needs to be compatible with the adjoining neighborhood fabric, while still allowing for an enclave of tourism-resort-related residential and lodging uses..." within residential building types. This zone would allow for both attached-to-detached single-family residential types with a range of residential, office, lodging, and resort support uses." We are not, I think at the P and Z meeting, there was a thought that we were wanting to go to P three. We don't, this isn't, it doesn't work for P three, and it doesn't work for P four. And I know we want everything to just fit perfectly within this P system, but this property is so un-unique. It just doesn't. And what we're recommending is that there remain a separate district and that that district have the kind of zoning that we've talked about here. It's actually more than is currently allowed. Currently, there are conditional use properties, and we're saying, we don't want that. Just give that. Those will be rights. That will be part of what it is. But what we don't want in there is the multi-story, three-story apartment density that would change that. And we want to continue the fabric of the community. It is not like-for-like. It might be the closest thing, but the closest thing isn't good. It's not going to be good for the neighborhood. And this has been designated for the lifetime of most all the neighbors. I'm new here, but there's people in the neighborhood who've lived there for forty years, and it's always been a special district because it is a very special piece of property. And I think that we all agree that, that it's a very special piece of property. And I know we don't own it. I know that, and that's going to be up to the owners. But I do think, as a city, as the council, we have the ability to maybe make some decisions that might help to preserve what that is. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Ms. Van Wyke. Appreciate hearing from you. All right. And the next person signed up to speak is Carol Rice. Ms. Rice, if you'll tell us all who you are and where you live, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for coming this evening.
My name is Carol Rice. I live at fourteen oh six Wilson. And actually, my intention was not to address specifics of this code tonight because I think you've heard from me and know very well where I stand and my husband and a lot of the neighbors stand on this particular issue. And our desire is that there be a carved-out special district like the one that was just presented to you. I would like to thank Mr. Sumral from L C R A for coming and for his willingness to work with the neighbors in a short period of time to perhaps come up with what would be a win-win for everyone, for the city council, for the neighbors, and for the L C R A. I would like to also comment on what an outstanding presentation I believe Sandra Van Wyke just gave to you. And if there is no objection, I would like for those neighbors who stayed until this point to simply show their support for a special zoning of this very, very special property by rising or raising their hand. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else signed up to speak for the nine E public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then I am officially closing the public hearing. So, that part has taken place. Can I, do I go back to the workshop, or do we need someone to make a motion to postpone the first reading?
I make a motion to table this till the twenty-second.
Thank you. I have a motion from councilmember Ennis.
Second.
And a race to the second, but I think Mayor Pro Tem Nelson got there first. So, there is a motion to, for ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty that we table the first- Am I reading the right one? We did the whole wrong one. It's not nine E. It's nine F. I read nine F, but I'm making my notes on nine E. Okay. All right. I'll just move my notes down. Okay. So, nine F, so it is ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-one. I have a motion on the table for the first reading to be tabled until October twenty-second. I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Everybody clear with what we're doing? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously, twenty-nineteen dash fifty-one. The first reading will be postponed to October twenty-second. The city manager is suggesting that we knock out the other public hearings while we're here because we can always go back to the workshop because we'll take any of that into account when, on the twenty-second. So, I'm going back to nine E, and I'm actually going to read nine E. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the twenty-thirty-six Comprehensive Plan by amending Chapter Five of the Transportation Master Plan as attached in Exhibit A and providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, a repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the October twenty-second, twenty-nineteen agenda for a second reading. I am officially opening the public hearing for nine E. Ms. Rice, you were signed up for others of these. Are you wanting to speak again? Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for nine E?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'm officially closing it. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, move to table the first reading of ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash five zero until the council meeting scheduled for the twenty-second of this month.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from councilmember Jackson that ordinance twenty-nineteen dash fifty, the first reading, be held on October twenty-second, tabled for tonight. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to item nine G. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-two of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the Authentic Bastrop Pattern Book as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption and amendments, a repealer, severability, and enforcement, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the October twenty-second agenda for a second reading. I'm officially opening the public hearing. Ms. Rice, you were signed up for nine G? Yes, ma'am. I'm just wanting to make sure you get an opportunity. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. I'm happy to entertain a motion. Move that we table this until the twenty-second?
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Rogers and a second from councilmember Peterson. We will be voting on moving ordinance twenty-nineteen dash fifty-two, the first reading, to the October twenty-second agenda. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to item nine H. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-three of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the Building Bastrop Technology Manual as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption and amendments, a repealer, severability, and enforcement, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the October twenty-second agenda for a second reading. Ms. Rice, you're still, you're okay. Madam Secretary, do I have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing.
Move to approve and move to the twenty-second.
I have a motion from councilmember Ennis and a second from councilmember Jackson that ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-three be tabled for tonight and moved to October twenty-second for the first reading of the ordinance. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. I am on nine I. Ms. Rice still does not want to speak on nine I, but I ask. I am opening the public hearing for nine I. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-four of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a development manual in compliance with Building Bastrop Block Code. Enacting purpose, authority, and jurisdiction as attached in Exhibit A, establishing a repealing clause, providing severability, providing an effective date, and move to include on the October twenty-second, twenty-nineteen agenda for a second reading. Madam Secretary, do I have anyone else signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
I am officially closing the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we table the motion, and I have the first reading on the next date that we talked about earlier, the twenty-second of October.
I'm going to take another shot at that, councilmember Jackson. I have a motion from councilmember Jackson that ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-four be tabled until October twenty-second for the first reading of the ordinance. I have a second from councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Nine J doesn't have a public hearing, so I'm happy to entertain a motion that we just table it till the twenty-second. I move to table that. I have a- I have a motion from councilmember Rogers?
Second.
And a second from councilmember Ennis that item nine J be tabled and moved to October twenty-second. Alan, do I have to read it?
The item, description number is enough. Yeah, I did the item number?
Yeah.
Is enough.
Is, okay. So, nine J, and I'll even go on and say it's ordinance twenty-nineteen dash forty-nine, is going to be tabled. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We're moving on to item nine K. We're on top of page four. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-five of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the twenty-thirty-six Comprehensive Plan as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, a repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the October twenty-second agenda for a second reading. And I'm not going to ask Ms. Rice because she didn't have K listed on her form. Madam Secretary, do I have anyone else signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
I am officially closing the public hearing.
I move to table to the October twenty-second meeting?
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Ennis and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson that ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash fifty-five be tabled and read on October twenty-second, twenty-nineteen, as the first reading of the ordinance. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. On nine L, we don't have to have a public hearing. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move to table and move to the, move to October twenty-second.
Easy for you to say. Is there-
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from councilmember Ennis, a second from councilmember Jackson that ordinance twenty-nineteen dash fifty-seven be tabled tonight and put on the October twenty-second agenda. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. So, we are going to go back to five C and complete the workshop on the Building Bastrop. But just so we're all on the same page, I believe we have left nine A, nine B, and nine D. So, we will do the workshop, do citizens' comments, the consent agenda, and we have three items for individual consideration. Is there anybody in the audience for one of the individual consideration items that is so disappointed I'm not going to do that next? Okay. All right. I just want to make sure I covered everybody. All right. We're on, we're back on five C, and I don't have to reread it because I've already read it. And now, I'll let Mr. Jones stand up where everyone can see him.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a work session to go over just a few outstanding items that we discussed. We've had some meetings with council members, the staff has, and this is just to go over some clarifying policy direction on a few of the items that we've had meetings with. So, with that, what we're going to talk about tonight, two big things are signs and mobile food vendors. We're going to discuss temporary signs, prohibited signs, variances to the sign regulations, and then pole sign locations that we've discussed. And we'll also talk about mobile food vendors, when and when they do not require permits. We'll talk about hours of operation and then connection to utilities. So, the first up is temporary signs. So, this is how we treat temporary signs in the current ordinance. So, we do allow people to have banner signs. They're allowed one per business, and they can have a banner for two weeks at a time, up to four times a year. The code actually does allow you to use all those at once if so desired, so you can actually have one for up to eight weeks at any given one time. Another temporary sign that's allowed in the current ordinance is a sandwich board. They're allowed one per business, and they're allowed to be out during normal business or operating hours. And then, another, a third type of temporary sign that we allow for in the code today are bandit signs, which are new subdivision residential signs. They're allowed to be out during the development phase of the project, and they're only allowed to be out during the hours, five AM Saturday morning to six AM Monday, and then they're supposed to be picked up after that. So, temporary signs, we do not allow them in the current, or we do allow them in the current code, but not in the B three code. So, that would be a policy direction we need to get from you all, whether or not you want to see these temporary signage, or types of signage allowed in the new code. So, that's, we need some direction on how you would like us to proceed with the B three code.
So, Mr. Jones, just for clarification, it's a chapter in the subdivision ordinance?
No. Currently?
Yeah.
Signs are in the building section, chapter three.
So, that's a funky thing.
That is a funky thing.
People expect it to be in the subdivision ordinance.
Or zoning, I agree.
In B three code, it is a chapter in our, in our new code.
Yes, that's correct.
And what you are showing us is what is allowed-
Correct.
-in the current code that is not allowed if someone goes and looks through B three and goes-
That's right. Like banners, for example, in the B three code. And I have a slide that'll explain it.
Okay.
But in the B three code, banners are just prohibited.
Okay. So, are you ready for us to, for council to talk about this?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Or do you have another slide?
I have several more slides, but if you want to address this one, and then we'll move forward.
On this same topic?
On this topic, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Would you want, you all want to let him finish presenting?
No, we're not communicating.
No, we're not.
On temporary signs, this is the only slide.
There we go.
This is the question.
So, staff needs council to give you policy directions so you know what and if to make changes to the code.
So, temporary signs will not, they're treated differently today versus they will be in the B three code.
Unless council gives you policy direction.
Unless you want us to roll this forward. And we can certainly do that. We just need direction.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
All right, Mayor. I brought this to the attention because the banner thing is an issue, whether we decided or not. But the city itself has a banner plaza. So, we're in the new B three codes, you're saying you can't have banners, which the city has banners. So, we would be coding ourselves out of compliance. We also have, not that they're good, bad, or ugly, I'm just saying that's, I just want us to be aware of the situation. We also have banners on every pole. So, I just want to make sure that we address things so the city is treated in the same light that we want our businesses treated. So, I want to be aware that you can't have two different rules, and we don't want to break our own rules. So, that's why I want to bring this up, so we can make a policy, so we talk, the city follows the same policies as that we want.
So, is it weird, oh, pass my name, go ahead.
Remind me what a bandit sign is?
A bandit sign as defined in the ordinance is a subdivision sign, uh, for new residential. So you'll see like a, a David Weekly home now building, turn this way to go see the home, the residential subdivision.
Every Saturday, KB Homes starts at Cedar and 95, and they put little, little signs that just stick in the ground that says, arrow this way to KB Homes. That's what a bandit sign is.
Okay. I, I, is that, are banners in, I, I know there are a bunch of sandwich boards all over town, downtown. Are, do we consider these a problem? Is that why we wrote them out of the code?
So, go ahead.
Well, I'm just...
Yeah.
Actually, the sandwich boards are still in the new code.
Sandwich boards are still in the new code. It's one of the allowed sign types in the new code. So this is currently the only temporary signs we allowed in the code. So, but sandwich boards are an allowed, and, and this isn't a table, and it might be helpful if I just pull it from the...
They're, they're taking it, they're, they're taking the sandwich boards out of the temporary part and putting it into a normal sign code in the new ordinance.
That's right.
That's correct.
So we are allowing them by right as a permanent sign instead of treating them as temporary.
As temporary, that's right.
Okay, I'm good.
Currently, they're temporary, they're going to be permanent in the code.
That's correct.
I knew I'd read it in there, and I didn't understand when that...
Right.
Okay, great.
So my question is, it will be allowed, uh, and now I'm only on sandwich boards.
Mm-hmm.
You're allowed one per business permanently in the code.
In the new code, that's right.
And is there also rules, like you can't put it in the middle where you're blocking the sidewalk and...
I believe there's language that speaks to accessible route, and you cannot block the pedestrian path, yes.
Okay. So is anyone wanting it to not be permanent, and they would prefer for it to be temporary? Is everybody okay with sandwich boards being permanent? I've got, I've got, y'all's over here, and nobody's nodding over there. Mr. Ennis is thinking. Okay, Mr. Jackson, uh, Councilmember Jackson is nodding, yes. Councilmember Ennis?
I'd rather they be temporary, but it's not, it's not hard to fast for me, so...
And, and, not poking the bear, trying for clarification, why do you want it to be temporary? And what's the difference, i- is the temporary back to the two weeks and four times a year? What, what is the difference between temporary and permanent?
Well, in the new B3 codes, there won't be any temporary. There, right now, the way it's written, there isn't any time limit, like you can have it for just a little while.
Gotcha.
There is none.
Okay.
So...
And the way the sandwich board is written in our current code, it's not temporary. If you can have one per business during normal business hours every day you're open, that is a permanent sign.
That's right.
So we have now taken the sandwich boards and appropriately classified them
Yes.
as the way we are using them, and that was the conversation we had.
So back to an authentic Bastrop, in Bastrop, businesses have, are allowed one sandwich board in front of their business during operating hours, and since that's the way that we work, that's what was written into the code.
That's correct.
By right. Okay. So is, is anyone opposed to that? Okay. Yay, that one's done.
So we still have to talk about banners and bandit signs?
Yeah, but I want to talk about bandit signs first. We saw a presentation from KB Homes that they would like to propose the nicer looking ones, they last for two years, and they owe us that proposal back. Does anyone have thoughts of they would rather have, um, something like that than the bandit? Or do you want to, uh, continue to allow the bandit? Or how, um, somebody, talk about bandit signs. Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Rogers, go ahead. You had your last question.
I was gonna say, the only thing that, that I have a problem with making rules on is, um, I hate to make a rule if we don't have a way or s, a personnel to actually enforce it. You know, the way the bandit, the sub, the way the current code is, they're from s, Saturday at 5:00 AM to Monday at 6:00 AM, there's not a staff member unless you call them out to go do that code. So, I mean, I just don't want to re, I just don't want to write rules that are so conforming that nobody's going to follow them, but nobody's going to enforce them either. So why haven't, I just don't want to put in a rule that we're not going to enforce.
We do en...
Hang on, just a second, there, Councilmember Jackson?
I don't have a problem with the bandit signs, um, as proposed there. Uh, and also, I like what KB Homes proposed also, because there may be other developers that want to change the style and not do something as nice as what KB Homes was proposing. So I think a combination of the two is fine with me.
Okay. Um, so, Councilmember Jackson says a combination. Um, Councilmember Ennis, where are you on this? With, with, you're okay with bandit signs? Councilmember Peterson's okay. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Well, I, I do want to address Councilmember Rogers' point, we don't have anybody to enforce it. I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that there's not so much an enforcement standard as even with the exception, if we find somebody and put their signs out beyond that, then we...
Full permit?
Then we address them. But, I mean, it's, I have no issues with, uh, with the...
Would they have to get a permit to get the permission for the bandit sign?
So we do enforce, because one thing the city manager really hates is illegal signs taped to utility poles. So code enforcement now rides for signs on Monday. So after 6:00 AM on Monday, if they're still up, the code enforcement officer will address them.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that they weren't, weren't enforcing it now, I'm saying that if we take it away on Saturday mornings, we would have to get somebody out.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was saying.
Yes, ma'am.
That if you don't allow this, nobody wants to get out Saturday morning at 5:00 AM and go collect up the signs. That's what I was meaning.
Good point.
That I don't want to put in a rule that nobody wants to go enforce.
Good point.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean, maybe weren't doing it, I just meant if you do it, then nobody wants to...
Okay, so what I hear, a, and council, do you want somebody, and I don't even know staff, do you want them to have to get a permit to do the bandit signs, or?
No.
Okay, all right. So I hear a council saying, we want to allow temporary bandit signs that is just like what we are allowing now. But I would like, I, can I make a request? I would like to, Councilmember Rogers said no, but I have the mic, so I'm going to anyway. I would like us to encourage subdivisions to utilize the proposal like what KB Homes brought us, to where it's not that it's mandated that you have to, but just the, hey, folks, this is a better way, and, and we would appreciate that. Is anybody opposed to that?
I would think, I would think they'd want to, because they have to pay the payroll for getting somebody out there every Saturday morning.
Exactly.
And somebody picking it up. So I think it's going to be a good, good...
And I think they would look better than the bandit signs. So, you know, and, and there are a lot of things in our code that we're, um, generally encouraging folks without saying shall and must. So I would just, if we're going to address that, I would like us to encourage folks to use, however, and you, Matt, you guys come up with the right way to call, because I know the, that thing that KB Homes presented is probably not what's going to go in the code.
You bet.
Yeah, some sort of kiosk directional signs with community, okay. Let's go back to the...
Comment, comment.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Since we're on temporary signage, would the KB signs or KB pole signs, would those be considered temporary?
No, those are permanent structure.
So we would need to address those in, in the other sections of...
Well, there's, we still have master sign plan allowed. Uh, so that would encompass that.
Uh, my only comment is since we don't temporary signage, I didn't think the KB pole would be part of it.
Two good points. So, on, under the temporary, we can say that these bandits are allowed, but we encourage you to do the kiosk signs, as you'll find in section blah, 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 right?
Right.
Blah, blah. Okay. So on the banners, the banner plaza, I assume we're talking about the banners at the end of the bridge. So did, did staff, and, and, I don't know whether it's city manager or Matt, and I don't care who answers me, did you envision, we're the city, and we're still going to have our banners on the end of the bridge, or did you envision, we're not doing that anymore?
I don't know that I owned the fact this wasn't in the code, and I'm going to ask them to put it back in the code, because they're going to do it anyway. And so we're either going to have to draw a line in the sand and really irritate people, or we just need to keep doing what we're doing.
And Councilmember Rogers, if I'm correct, that was exactly your point. Councilmember Jackson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, well, besides for the banner plaza, I think Councilmember, um, Rogers was mentioning the other banners, like on the pole banners, were you, is that what you were also addressing?
Well, you have the pole banners and actually Main Street, Rebecca just replaced all the open little banners and hang in front of every business. So, I mean, we, we as a city use them.
Right.
So that was what I wanted to bring up to you.
So we need to make sure that we're in compliance as a city, uh, if we're going to enforce this as a new ruling.
Which I think was exactly Councilmember Rogers' point. So do we have a definition of a banner, and we need to be... And does the definition of the banner include hanging off the, the street poles and hanging?
So current...
Y'all need to clean that up.
So we'll, what I'm hearing is we'll roll forward the current regulations, and we have an actual, a light pole banner in the current code, and we'll roll that forward.
Okay, council, so, uh, Councilmember Rogers, this was your item, so I want to make sure you feel like e- everybody's cool with that? Okay. Matt, do you understand?
So we're going to allow banners as presented, plus the light pole banners.
And the, like, the open sign banners?
Yes.
And that kind of, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
So are we going to take out the, the, the aspects of, uh, of time, two weeks, four times a year, if the city's going to have them up there year-round?
Well, we don't have them all up there.
Actually, if the city takes them down at certain times, particularly in a event, they're only up there for like a month, and they come down. They normally do regulate the, only up for a while.
Well, to, to, to your point, I would want to make sure that the city is compliant with the same thing that private citizen is, and so we want to make sure that...
Yeah, currently, there's an exception in the current code for community events, that you can have those banners, and then in the B3 code, it actually exempts, um, it, it ex, it gives an exception to the city to promote city events.
I would rather it, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'd like to, I like to have that clarity in there, so they understand that it's for community-wide events and not marketing a particular
Right.
business or function.
And rather than it being an exception, because I hate making rules that like, it's a rule for you, but I'm not going to follow it. I would prefer that it's one per business, or citywide events, it's four weeks, or whatever it is, and it, and we just write it in, and not, not give ourselves an exemption, so that we're accomplishing the same thing, but we just stay right up front. That's the deal. Are, are you guys okay with that? I hate it when government entities make rules and then immediately exempt themselves from said rules.
So we're still good with the, the, the time when it's as stated on the slide?
Councilmember Rogers, is that agreeable with you?
Okay.
Everybody okay with the one per business, two weeks, four times a year?
Perfect.
You're not my son up.
The only su- suggestion I make is that you're, I don't know, I know that a lot of your sign ordinance has to do with size, blah, blah, blah. I don't know if you want to limit a size. I mean, I can buy a pretty damn big banner.
That's a technical term, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't make him as big as you're...
Just like blah, blah, blah.
I'm just saying you might want to put something about, you get a certain amount of banner size for the size of building or something, you know?
Well, what we'll probably do is just roll forward the current regulation if that's suitable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I was just getting city manager. So they'll discuss it, and we'll see it when we, um, see the new words. Okay. So, Mr. Jones, had, did you get what you needed?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty.
Just to clear, thank you.
Slide number two.
All right, so this is the...
I can't read that. Okay, there we go.
Hopefully you can, uh, at least make this out. So what this is...
Colin, can you help enlarge it? Everybody okay?
So what this is, it's a table that shows the types of signs, uh, that are prohibited, both in the current code, and then as they roll forward in the B3 code. Uh, so if you go there on the left, uh, roof signs are not permitted in the current code. Uh, they're, they're not permitted in the B3 code. Uh, banner signs, uh, they're not permitted in the current code, except as temporary, and except as on a light pole. Those are the two exceptions. Um, and then in the B3 code, uh, they're also, uh, not allowed. Uh, there is the exemption for city government, and that's why that asterisk is there, but we'll now clean that up, given y'all's direction.
Yeah, so we'll do like banners, temporary, and then we ought to just say streetlight banners, they're allowed.
Yes, we'll add that classification in there.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so currently inflatable signs not allowed currently or the new code. Uh, tethered balloons not allowed currently or the new code. Uh, bandit sign, they're not permitted, except for the temporary residential subdivision signs, they're not allowed in the new code also. Uh, pennants are not allowed in both codes. Uh, searchlights and beacons are specifically called out in the current code. Uh, they are not included in the B3 code, we'll regulate those for nuisance. Uh, flashing, blinking, scrolling, again, not permitted today or in B3.
You know we're going to talk about this. Does, does that mean our convention center sign doesn't comply with our code?
Uh, is it a static image? I think it's static, and then it just changes. It's a scrolling?
I think... I think it still scrolls when it's longer than, you know, if the event name doesn't fit in the full field.
Surely appropriate person will check that out tomorrow morning.
How do you guys feel about scrolling signs?
Again, I just brought it to your attention that I didn't want us to write a rule that we were breaking before we even write it.
And, and I think that, so when we talked about signs at one point, it was noted that the civic center sign was noncompliant, and we fixed it, and it became static. So if we have changed it, then we have fallen off the wagon, and we got somebody here in charge of that, that we want to make sure we get back on the wagon.
Okay, so let me bring up another subject. Wasn't there, last year, two different businesses that had, he got it, but now I can't have it, blah, 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 something about divided numbers or their message board?
Percentage of the rest of the board.
Yeah, so I, and I'm not sure, reading that policy, I'm sorry, I'm just not, it's technical, I didn't know what blinking or flashing, what does all of that mean? So do the ones that are out there that we allowed earlier this year, or last year?
Yeah, so as long as they're not blinking or flashing, if they're a static image, and then they transition to another static image, they would be compliant.
Okay.
So they just can't be blinking, flashing. Uh, essentially, you want to get away from movement.
So the ones that are out right now on 71 with two different businesses, those would be compliant?
With, specifically, uh, which ones are we talking about?
The two oil places or something, they had a problem?
Time to put your touch, but those are static, but...
Those are static.
It's the car wash.
Yeah, the decar, the car wash, and then the lube place across the street or something.
Well, and then council, I would throw out there that...
Jennifer, come up here just a minute, please.
That I would also throw out that what seems appropriate and allowable on 71 may or may not be appropriate and allowable for everyone everywhere else.
That's totally cool. I just want to make sure that we write in whatever rules we want, so everybody gets to play by the same rules.
Yes, the ones that, uh, were changed out last year, they can change every seven seconds. So, and we have gone in time to check those. So the message does change every seven seconds, but it doesn't scroll, it doesn't fade in, it just changes.
And that will be allowed in the new B3 code? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'll go back to something we've talked about, uh, from several different directions, and that is impaired driving. When you have something that's scrolling, uh, your eyes are not on the road, your eyes are on the scroll, and that, that gives me concern. Whether it's enough to ban them completely, but, um, that's my thoughts on the subject.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, you? So now's the time to have the conversation.
Matt, to be clear, we currently don't scroll, and we're not proposing scrolling.
Correct.
What Jennifer said is, there's a message, and it changed.
That's right.
Done blink, done scroll, it just appears, does away.
Changes to something else.
That's right.
It's great, I endorse that. It's great, I endorse that.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, seven seconds, no blinking, no scrolling?
Got it.
You got it. Okay, I'm sorry, you can keep going, I just thought it would be easier if we talked about these at the-
No, it's perfect, thank you, it's what we wanted.
Billboard, oh gee, there's a good topic.
Yep, so they're not permitted today, and they would not be permitted in the new code. They, we prohibit, and this is what the city manager was talking about, we prohibit signs posted in the public right-of-way, on utility poles, et cetera. We will not allow those in the B3 code. Trailer auto-mounted, boat-mounted, and other are not allowed in today's code. There actually are allowed in the new code, so long as they don't obstruct the view of the driver. Feather banners?
Whoa.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, are you okay with that?
Sorry?
Councilmember Burris, yes?
Um, I guess I'm still waiting on something for monument signs, but I guess I'll wait and talk about that later, for the monument sign situation, but-
So, the question we're forcing on trailer auto-mounted in the right-of-way, it is currently not allowed. The B3 codes are proposing that it be allowed, are you okay with that? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
So why were they not allowed in the old code, and why should they be allowed in the new code?
I'm not exactly sure. So, in the, in the, in the old code, it prohibits them from being parked in the right-of-way, and in the new code, they are allowed so long as they don't obstruct the view. So, I guess the feeling is, if they're parked appropriately, if they're not creating a public health, safety or health to the motoring or pedestrian traffic, then why not allow it?
So I think the difference is how we view parking in the new code versus the old code. And so, we are now allowing businesses to use the public right-of-way for parking. Downtown is a great example. And so, have a trailer or an auto-mounted sign that you have appropriately parked in the right-of-way, we will allow. If you are not appropriately parked, you will be ticketed and towed, not because of your sign, but because you are not appropriately parked.
And that, I was wondering if it got back to, it's my private, my private car that I am parked legally in a right-of-way, can you restrict what I have in, in the back of my pickup? Councilmember Jackson?
We went to this when we were talking about billboards before, and I had a question on billboards, and that's when, that's when I was trying to get through those. So billboards are not permitted, that doesn't include existing billboards?
Existing billboards can continue unless they are destroyed-
Destroyed, so much for sending them.
-and then sixty percent. That's right.
Okay, so are you okay with the trailer mounted in the right-of-way? Councilmember Ja- or Innes, I'm sorry?
Are there time limits to how long they can park in that particular one spot?
Unless that parking spot has a time limit on it.
Unless there's some type of towing enforcement, but we don't have time to parking, from what I'm aware.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Everybody okay? All right, moving on.
Excellent. Feather banners, they're not defined, they're actually not permitted in the new code. Pole signs, they're permitted today, they are not permitted in the new code, except for along Highway 71. Pole signs are now permitted in the new code along Highway 71.
I thought we also talked about on 95, between 150 and 71, where there's a gazillion already there.
We've talked about it, and there's the Buc-Ee sign that's along 71, not 95. It was our recollection that it was discussed and decided not to go with that option.
Okay, well, let us poll the audience, no pun intended, but um. Councilmember Rogers?
My only, my only comment on the pole sign is, in the reference, it, in the new manual that came out on Friday, I know you updated a lot of things for me, it says the pole signs aren't allowed, and then I know, I know you do reference it under the manual, under the monument.
Right.
I would just ask that you put a little asterisk on them, where to go look for those. Because if they stop under the, that one page that says they're not allowed, but it doesn't tell them to go read on another page that where the exceptions are. That's all my only comment on the pole sign.
Yes, ma'am, understood.
Just make it easy to navigate.
So on page-
Just so they know, because they're one-
Page 172, add an asterisk and refer them to the, okay.
Just so they understand.
Yeah, the whole point of doing this is to have some clarity. So, Councilmember Jackson?
I'm just gonna ask about 95, just what we're talking about.
Yep, that's what we're talking about.
Okay. I think that 95 is gonna eventually develop into something similar to 71, maybe not as busy as 71, but it is gonna be a pretty busy district as development goes that way. So, I'd hate to limit the use of pole signs out there.
Are you talking about all of 95 in the city limits, or are you talking about 150 to 71?
Uh, 150 to 71 would be fine.
Well, you've got the, just, just so everybody's clear, the Firestone, I believe, has a pole sign, which is on that side of 71.
It's north of 150.
Well, yeah, it's north of 150, but it's at the intersection.
Well, I understand, but the person that buys the property across the street is gonna say, "Well, he has one." I'm just wanting everybody to be clear.
Wherever you draw the line, you gotta draw the line. So, Mr. Jones does not care, he needs council to tell him how to write the code.
I think we should go to the other side of 70, of 95 there, for pole signs, and then go to 71. From that corner forward to 71.
So from Farm Street South?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that the reason we built this code was for market-driven at this point, and he did write format, where the city put in a big variance, a nice variance clause in the sign ordinance. I think we should leave it just at the 71 at this point, and then let market drive 95 and if mark, if 95 gets to where it needs to have pole signs, we can address that.
And, so we can address that in a, in an annual review, and is there a process for someone to come and ask for a variance?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what I was gonna say. These codes are written for giving staff direction to enforce policy. There is nothing that prevents anybody from coming and asking for something different.
And I do want to add, they did write a big section on how to go get a variance on the signs.
Right, it's just at that property on the other side, his own commercial, not even want to limit any possibility of people requesting, if they can request it, that's fine.
Well, and part of it is, try, there are, there are some folks that think that things may have gotten out a little out of hand of 71, and it's hard to put the, put the rabbit back in the box. But if you're on 95 to your point, well past, like on the other side of the cemetery, there's not any pole signs around, and a monument sign may work just fine, and if that's what all your competitors are doing right up and down the road, that may be a better look and feel for the community than pole signs. But, that could also be, instead of playing the, what could someone come up with, do, I think Councilmember Rogers is saying, there's an exception policy, and then we know, then we're having a concrete conversation instead of a what-if conversation. Is that, and, Councilmember Jackson, did you have?
Right, I mean, you mentioned monument signs, as long as they don't obstruct the view.
Yes.
And, which is my big problem with monument signs existing.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
You know, we've, we've already, we have a mechanism to, to, to address variance as it were requested, and plus also, we've made it quite clear that we'll be revisiting the, at least once a year to be able to make modifications based on the changes that are being brought about the city to market for that aspect.
Okay, council, I think we are telling Mr. Jones on pole signs that they are allowed on 71, and that is the only place that they, that staff can sign off on them, and if somebody wants them on 95 or anywhere else in town, they have to go through a variance process and come to council. Is that, or P and, whatever the process is, if they go to P and Z and then come to us or whatever, but they gotta go through the process. Okay, let's keep going. Gotta get closer to the mic, we can't hear you.
So what is a changeable copy sign, please?
Changeable copy sign would be what you see, like at Neighbors, right in that area, Burleson Crossing, there's one on, on their sign where somebody comes out and physically changes the letters on that sign.
So I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tim Nelson's question. If they were allowed before, why are they not allowed now?
I'm not exactly sure why that one was specifically prohibited, it was just brought to the attention.
Movie theaters, marquees?
Well, the, the marquees are actually mentioned in the sign code, that they can change it.
Yeah, marquees are.
But unless we have a reason that we shouldn't allow, I don't know why we're stopping the people that have them now.
It would be my recommendation, if they're allowed today, you allow them in the future. It is a significant upgrade to cause a business owner to change what is, if it's old school-
And the market will drive it.
And works. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
There's one at Burleson Crossing.
Yes, there is.
That's correct.
Okay, so it sounds like that turned into a permitted.
Take care of that one.
All righty, keep going.
Commercial flags are permitted today, they're not permitted in the B3 code.
A commercial flag?
Mm-hmm, so, anything-
It has to say the business name on it.
Yeah, or a logo, or something like that. So if a business flew a flag with their logo in or business, in the current code it's allowed, and the B3 code, it's not.
Now, now the KB Homes, when they presented, they were talking, when it's their KB Home flags.
Yeah, and that would be, that would be approved as part of the master sign plan.
And that would be one that you would specifically allow under those conditions in that placement?
If you allow it, so that's, that's back to the one-offs.
That's right.
So council, are you all right with reviewing the one-offs, or, Councilmember Innes?
Right.
Your light was on, though.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Rogers? I don't have nothing. Okay, so, are y'all at, they have to come ask if they want a commercial sign? Or, a commercial flag?
Flag.
Sorry, sorry, thank you. Commercial flag? Okay. So you're, so you're okay with how it's written? All right, keep going.
Portable signs, they're not defined in this code, they would be not permitted.
What's a portable sign? How was that designed?
Portable sign would be, uh-
The old yellow signs that used to have the arrows that flash, that had the, the changeable copy on it, that you go down to the curb.
That's a good one.
Did you actually put the definition in there? Because it wasn't in there.
I believe so, I think we caught that.
Yeah, if we're not gonna allow it, we need to define what they are.
Right. I believe it made it in there.
So we know for sure what we're saying you can't do.
Correct.
Well, that's on that sign, on this, on your new, nice chart here, you had the tethered balloon?
Yes.
That Willie Spoken dropped, but you talked about the big giant one that they floated up a hundred feet in the air.
Yeah, that's a tethered one.
Okay, so, but also, a kid's balloon is tethered with a string, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands which balloon you're talking about.
Yeah, so what we discussed is like a big tethered balloon that was, is clearly an advertisement.
I'm just wanting to make a definition in there.
She just doesn't want to set Chief Altgeld and Chief Nagy up to be arresting small children for walking down the sidewalk with a balloon attached to their wrist.
And that won't happen, will it, Chief Altgeld?
So I just want you to have a definition. If you don't want it, just define it, that's all I'm asking.
So tethered balloons are not in the new one, it's just balloons. So, we'll, we'll get some clarification on that.
Can I just take a moment to say thank you very much, Councilmember Rogers, for going through the details?
You didn't thank me last week.
I appreciate, I, I appreciate very much that, because we're catching some major stuff, and that's the whole point of doing this, thank you.
Okay, and then the last one would be signs on pedestrian elements, again, we did not have that in the current code, there-
Is a pedestrian element a guardrail, or a-
It's like a guardrail, well, it would be like a trash can, a bench, like the things within the public realm that we are now going to be regulating, they-
Please do not permit this.
Yeah, you don't want it to be used as advertising.
Yeah, I used to know what a pedestrian element was.
Yeah, like anything within the public realm that we are now gonna have as part of that.
I was hoping that was gonna deal with monuments, because they're blocking pedestrians as well as pedestrians.
We're not there yet, Councilmember Jackson?
So, Councilmember Jackson, we understand that you have a problem with the sight view of monument signs, and I can assure you that the Assistant City Manager of Development Services and the Planning Director of Development will go out and, and make sure, from an engineering standpoint, we can check that box for you. I hear you, loud and clear, sir.
And it will be appreciated by all citizens.
That's right.
But Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Just go signs on pedestrian elements, what about, how about signs that reference safety, you know, hold on a handrail.
Yes, now, those are absolutely, there's exceptions for safety signs, and I strongly encourage you to keep that there.
Okay, and the other thing I'm thinking about is like a bus stop, can you have the bus schedule on it? Because if that bus stop is a shelter, is that a pedestrian element? And I'd like to be able to see the bus schedule.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that that's advertising a different business, it's providing information for a service, but we can add some clarification on that.
So we'll get clarification on it, but signs on pedestrian elements is a garage sale, car wash, five, whatever, whatever. So, it, it's the, the visual clutter that is not authorized for a government-regulated use.
Okay, just make sure you're comfortable with the definition.
Parks is a governmental regulated use.
Completely agree, but just make sure we've got a clear definition, because if somebody gets mad, that's where they're going, and that's what they're gonna, and council's gonna be going, "That's not what we thought we approved."
Okay.
Okay, another slide there.
Uh, mayor, pardon me, please.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me. We went through all these signs, I did not see a yard sign.
Help me with the yard sign.
For rent, garage sale.
A political yard sign.
Political yard signs are allowed. Yes, sir.
So the state regulates political yard signs and circumvents any authority that you may have, so we would defer to the state code on political signs.
Good question, Councilmember Peterson, thank you for that.
So I think a question came up about what types of variances we're, we've been receiving and approving. So we went back to 2013 and looked, we've actually had 12 applications since 2013. Two were denied, two were withdrawn, and eight have been approved. Of the approved, one was for a neon sign in downtown, one was for, to allow off-site advertising, and that was at the Art Guild for a nonprofit. One was another for an increased sign area. We had another one for a height and area increase of up to 50 foot and 227 square feet. Again, another one, increase the maximum area. We had another one for height and area, and then two more for increased area. The, the, most of the ones with the increased area, where they were already at their limit and wanted to add an additional tenant, which pushed them over that limit, and those were approved. Two that were denied was for 100-foot pylon sign, and then for a 70-foot pylon sign, and then two were withdrawn by the applicant before they were heard. So those are the types of variances we've been hearing.
So they don't happen times?
Twelve times since 2013, they're not a lot.
Mayor, I had, I had asked him to go, go back and look at this, because I wanted a chance to see what businesses, what businesses have asked for on the, on the current zoning, so we could address anything that they were being asking for, so we could think about it going forward. So, it didn't look like they asked for much more than what they already have.
No, ma'am, I would agree.
Thank you, you're researching that for me.
You bet, not a problem. So, another one we've talked about-
Hang on, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Oh, yes.
On the, on the signed variances, do we have an indication of where those variances were requested? It looks that these may be along 71, as opposed to being-
Well, the Art Guild was on 6th Center.
Yes, that's correct, most of them are along the commercial corridors. I think one was for a sleep center, so again, on 71, and then a couple of them were the multi-tenant signs along 71.
Council, I would offer up that if there's been 12, and actually 10, if two people withdrew them, 10 in six years, if we see a rise in them and we're approving them all the time, then we'll, then we'll update-
We'll tweak the code.
The code. I would expect staff would come to us and say, "Look, you guys are approving them all the time, we need to update the code."
Yeah, and that would be part of the annual review by the DRC.
Okay, all right.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, it was Maxine's, Buc-Ee's, Bastrop Con Art, Sleep Experts, a Bastrop Station at Childers and 71, Southside Barbecue, Harbor Freight, Buc-Ee's, Craig's Jewelers, another business on 71, and Quick Trip.
Yeah, okay. All right, good job, Mr. Jones.
Pole signs, again, we, I think we already got here.
I think we've covered this.
So I think we're good.
Or is it, what's the maximum height, 35?
Yes, and allowed on 35, or 71, excuse me, and then we'll keep that in the, in the current regulations, and then we'll bring variances.
And location and height are the same thing. Staff can approve up to 35 feet on 71. If somebody wants something different than that, they can go through the process.
It's a variance, that's correct.
Everybody okay with that?
Excellent. Mobile food vendors-
Okay, so, wait.
Yep.
Anything else we need to talk about on signs? Anything else we need to talk about on signs? Because Councilmember Jackson has gone on record that monument signs not be in the line of sight issue at an intersection.
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear.
All right, changing subjects to mobile food vendors.
Mobile food vendors. And this is just a couple of things, permits when they're required.
Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Peterson would like to suggest that you get a taller car, but we will continue.
I did, and I still can't see that.
Yeah, so, how the permits are received, are they yearly renewal, do they transfer from locations? So we, we looked at it, so if they are a true mobile food vendor moving about the city, serving multiple locations, those will be on their permit, and they won't require a move, permit as they move from place to place. If they are going to set up shop in a specific location as a permanent, a permanent fixture, rather, it will require a separate permit, because we'll have to look at a site develop, or a site plan that shows parking, maneuverability, and those things. So that would be when it triggers a separate permit. Yearly renewal, they would require a CO, and so that would just be that yearly renewal, just like any other use in the town, which includes a health inspection by the county.
Which is an annual event.
Which is an annual event.
So clarifying, on one, you are permitting the temporary truck itself, and on the other, if it's a truck that's attached to utilities and, and really kind of just shy of brick and mortar, you have to actually look at the site to make sure that there's not a drainage issue and they're properly connected.
Absolutely correct.
And, 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 and we, when we get to it, we would contend that if they are connected to utilities, they're no longer mobile.
Sure. So they can't get a mobile food vendor?
No, I think that the intent of this mobile food vendor ordinance was to allow food trucks that rolled freely about the world and came to special events. I think now there is a request to make them be able to be in a specific location connected to utilities. So that now makes it a temporary, permanent structure. I think that puts you now having to ask yourself about the restaurants that invest in brick and mortar, that invest in grease traps and make the expense, you now have an unfair competitive advantage. We did not debate that when we had this conversation, because it was solely to be able to let rolling food trucks come into the community for special events or whatever. We've not issued any mobile food truck permits. The question now is, can they connect to utilities? Can they be in a permanent location? My comment would be, we really do need to have that conversation, because when they become permanent temporary structures, I think that changes the mobile concept.
But the reality is, that's a policy conversation.
Yes, why, dear man.
That's why it's right here.
And so, one of the things, because it, it could be, you're connected to utilities, and unlike a brick and mortar, you can't stay there forever, you're, you're allowed to stay there as long as the property, until that property is sold or whatever. So that, that's a, that's a policy conversation, that if we're okay with it, we either say, "No, now we're adding an, an additional definition to mobile food vendors," or we are saying, "If you connect to our utilities, now you're a temporary, and you go through this, either you don't allow it, you add it to mobile food vendors, or you designate it a different way." Mayor Pro Tim, oh, who was first? Y'all were?
They were.
Okay, Councilmember Jackson?
I was just questioning, I mean, the situation with the, a food truck, but that they are hooked up to utilities, and that's something I guess we're gonna discuss, obviously, now, since you-
What we're discussing right now.
Okay, because we do have several food trucks that are hooked up to utilities, and And so, uh, I know that since we're discussing it now, it seems to be that we're not recognizing them as food trucks because they're hooked up to utilities, is that my understanding?
So, they are treated as a non-conforming use that predates this code.
Okay.
So, we aren't discussing them at all.
Okay.
Because they are exempt, because they've been here for a considerable period of time, and...
But they could be the very reason that we have a policy discussion that allows them.
Yes.
Okay. The other point in question was, um, we had a vendor a few years ago that, um, had a restaurant, a brick and mortar restaurant, but they took a truck and they just opened it up and, um, and sold their food from that. They were a food truck, but they weren't using utilities, but they were stopped from doing that. I guess it was because of, uh, they didn't have a permit to do that, and...
Yes, that's right. We didn't allow food trucks in the city until this.
Yeah, and that, this is a pilot program, and that's one thing I wanted to clarify. The mobile food truck that you will find in the code is the ordinance that this council approved that runs out on November 1st, because it was a pilot program.
Correct.
And so, then after November 1st, when we have a new ordinance, that new ordinance will be what becomes a part of this chapter. So, it's, it's October 8th, so basically, we're at the end of our pilot program. But prior to that, um, we didn't have a mobile food truck. That's why someone would have been shut down. And to your point, there are some food trucks that are connected to utilities. And it reminds me, Councilmember Rogers up here, if we have allowed that before, then why would we write a rule that could, to, a potential policy conversation is that then continue to have them as non-compliant. Councilmember Ennis?
So, for clarification, you, excuse me, you, uh, do a site plan for when they're attached to utilities and become more permanent. You don't do any kind of site, um, permitting for mobile? I mean, they can just, uh, park themselves anywhere, right?
Like, if they're going to park at a specific location, then we require like a sketch drawing that shows that they're not in required parking, not in a fire lane, things like that in nature.
So, you do kind of a quasi-site?
Yes, more like a, a plot plan, making sure it's not in drive lanes or fire lanes and things of that nature. Yes, sir.
I had a comment, but it was on the screen prior to this one. But I didn't know if you want to stay on that policy, get an answer to that policy.
We're talking about move, food vendor, so any of it, there was a...
Well, actually, oh, yeah, okay, this one. Okay, so, what, my question was, is in the policy, when I read it, when I came to speak with Matt, it had, you know, they were required to buy a permit, but it never, according to that one, it didn't have any renewal. So, I was afraid to see, would never know actually how many food trucks. I mean, once you buy one permit, it never, it never expired. So, I wanted to make sure, even if they renewed it for a lesser fee, that way we could keep track of who was actually out there, you know, and going on.
I think part of why it was written the way it was is because it was the pilot program.
It was temporary in nature.
And it expired in six months.
That's right.
The question that y'all need to now answer is, do you want a yearly renewal? Because the other ones, if we issued them, expired as the mayor said on October 31st.
Well, I understand, but it, the way it was written to be approved, it was still that way. That's why I wanted to bring it to our attention. I, I personally think we need a renewal, just so we can keep track of who's selling food out there at what locations. The other thing, just to comment, the, the fee amount is still in this book, because I know we were going to remove it and then put it only on a fee schedule, just side comment. But that would be my motion, that we would, or the discussion to make a renewal, just so we could keep track of who was actually still out there.
So, do you think an annual permit that's reviewed, that's renewed annually?
Yeah, they can, I mean, it doesn't have to be as much as the first permit, but at least that way we could keep track. I mean, they have to get a, a boot permit from the county every, every year anyhow. But that way, we would never know if they ever, I mean, if a brick and mortar closes, you know they're gone, because their stores close. But who's going to know what the trailer, the owner's going to go out there and make sure they're still selling.
So, Councilmember Rogers is suggesting that it be an annual permit that's renewable, but it has a fee associated. Is anybody concerned with that? Everybody okay?
Would it be okay to use a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah. Please, me fine. CO?
It's yearly, it has a small fee associated, so we can inspect it. Perfect.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson? COs are yearly?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, they, I'm sorry, they require, uh, a yearly inspection for fire. That's right. I'm sorry. No, I misspoke.
You've made...
She's like, wait.
Yeah, Councilmember Rogers is like, "What?"
No, I'm sorry. I was thinking of something else. My apologies.
The person who's wanting to follow the rules, you just gave her a heart attack. It's a lot, Mr. Jones.
That's what I get for trying to write and think at the same time.
At the same time. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, you've been very patient. Please, go ahead.
You can go to your next slide there. You want, uh, there it is, right there. Does, uh, does only connecting the water sewer constitute, hooking to utilities? Or does that also mean electricity? Does somebody want an extension cord to an existing facility? Would that be connected to utilities?
No, it would be permanent, this, this deals with permanent connections to a utility. So, getting a, a specific meter.
Somebody hardwires between your trailer and...
That's right.
And, and a deal, would that, would that be a permanent utility?
Hard wiring, yes.
We need to clarify whether or not we want to have electricity, water, and sewer up there. I'm just seeking clarity.
So, add electric to that?
I would think, possibility of somebody...
Well, and, and we need to have the policy discussion, and this is the perfect time. There's part of me that wants, wants to sell electricity, water, and sewers, where it has to, it, where it's, it's market-driven, and you're selling food, and your restaurant has been inspected by the county. And if you aren't doing good food, you're probably not going to make it. And, um, Councilmember Rogers has really brought home, uh, there are some somewhat temporary, I, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but food truck-ish sorts of things that are on permanent, connected to hardwire, to water, sewer, and electricity. And I think we, we're surviving. So, so, council, we need to say, "You're okay with it," and we write it in. And, and I, I, I'm not sure if we, I don't care how, with, with the city attorney, if he says, "Okay, it's a different kind of mobile food vendor," or you want to call it something different. But we need to have the policy discussion of, "Do we want to allow that?" Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I don't think, I, I don't have a problem with them being hooked up with the water or sewer, because that would actually make them probably wash their hands more and clean their dishes more, if they had more water and stuff. So, I would think that would make it healthier, and I wouldn't, I don't care what they do or not, but, I mean, that's just...
So, hang on. Councilmember Peterson?
I was just going to say, if we allow them to hook up, uh, with the water, the electric, and sewer, they're not mobile anymore.
Okay. So, do you want them called something different, or do you not, and not allow it?
Not allow it.
So, then do you want to remove the ones that exist in town now?
No, if they've been existing before, they're put in the policy.
Alan, you may want to be paying attention here, please.
No, no, I know, I, I, I know. Like, calm down, it's fine. I'm just asking.
We're still talking policy, it's a workshop. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, if, if they're going to hook up to utilities, if they're, they're being competing with our brick and mortar locations, I, I think that to remove the mobile characteristics from it, you know, take your wheels off if you want to be, um, permanent. And everybody's looking to do connections. So, like, you know, frankly, I, I, I want them to be able to compete fairly with our brick and mortars, and not unfairly, and they need to be a permanent structure, permanent, if they have wheels on it, that constitutes non-permanent to me.
So, if they go in, put it on blocks, and take the wheels off, now they're compliant?
If they're hooked up to utilities, yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Um, I'm thinking no to that. I'm thinking, I mean, for me, because, I mean, I guess I use a lot of food trucks that are...
Please be clear about what you're saying no to.
I'm saying no to taking the bricks, taking the wheels off and, um, making them permanent or consider them brick and mortar at that point in time. Because we have several people that would love to be brick and mortar, but can't afford it. So, their, their only way that they can exist is through a food truck, which they sometimes move to use for festivals and other things, but they would like to still have that ability to come back and connect to the water, the sewer, and electricity. So, there are some people that are duly doing that, because they just can't afford to build it.
So, how often does it have to move? And who's going to keep up with that?
Well, I mean, I don't think that we, that's something...
So, you're okay with they exist now, you want to just allow them?
Yes.
Okay, you want to allow them, Mr. Peterson does not want to allow them. Councilmember Ennis, do you want to chime in?
To the point where we're parsing words here, I, I just don't understand why thi- this is working for us.
Well, we do, are you talking about existing ones? We, we do have existing ones, but to be clear, we haven't issued any permits under the mobile food permit ordinance.
Oh, you haven't?
No, sir.
And the mobile food permit ordinance does not allow connection to water and sewer.
That's correct.
So, people have come, and, and I've gotten one from called, one of the things, this is interesting from a nuisance standpoint, if you don't allow them to hook to power, they're running a generator. And a generator is much noisier when being hooked to power.
We have new nuisance regulations that can control that.
That, that's right, but the, the point being, if you are wanting to have additional choices, and you want to, Councilmember Jackson is talking about businesses that maybe can't afford brick and mortar, but they can afford to hook to electricity, so that they are not a nuisance. You know, I mean, you can, there's 27 sides to this, but we got to give staff, they, they need to know what we're, what we're going to...
I agree with, uh, Councilman Peterson.
So, you, okay, so, uh, Councilmember Peterson, you're at? No. No connection to permanent utilities. If you want to connect to permanent utilities, welcome to the brick and mortar world. But you grandfather the ones that currently exist, because you've been here long enough, you're in. That's, am I clearly stating your opinion? Okay, so, that's going to be our basis. Councilmember Rogers, you okay with that, or you got some changes?
Well, my question's being, okay, so if we grandfather the, the ones that are in there now, what guidelines will they have to live by? And even, even though they're grandfathered in, they'll still have to have some sort of guidelines. Will they be now inspected like a brick and mortar? Or nobody talks to them, because you're grandfathered in, you get to do what you want to? I'm just wondering, I mean, there has to be some guidelines somewhere.
They still have to be inspected annually by the county?
They do have to have the health inspection by the county that they'd have to adhere to. If we make a policy to have a CO, we could inspect it with a CO. But other than that, it would be grandfathered and continue to use.
Is it part of the health code, they have to have access to, um...
Public restroom facility.
Public restrooms, and there has to be tanks on the...
There has to be three compartment sinks, yes, ma'am, all of that.
Like an RV, I mean, they have to have...
It's self-contained.
That's right.
So, all of our ones that are in town are compliant with what you just said?
I'd have to check with the county for sure. But as far as our regulations, they've been allowed to, to operate.
So, our regulations are the state health codes. And we contract with the county to conduct those inspections on our behalf.
On an annual basis.
So, the city does not have specific policies beyond the state health code guidelines.
That's correct.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson, did you want to add something?
Yes, but my biggest concern also is, if they hook up to the sewer connection, how do we, I guess, through a CO, how do we regulate them putting, uh, grease and stuff?
So, that would be part of why we would review them, uh, for a site plan, because they'd have to show, like, a brick and mortar has a grease trap, for instance. So, they'd have to show us, uh, how they're going to deal with those, uh, I think they're called fogs, fats, oils, and greases. It'd be part of that review process, similar to a brick and mortar.
Very good, thank you.
Um, Commissioner, Councilmember Peterson, under the TCEQ standards that we would treat under wastewater, there are instances where we have reason to believe they're violation. And we have staff that would, um, go out and inspect, but it wouldn't be under the health code. It would be under the TCEQ standards, because that impacts the ebi-gbs that maintain the bacteria at the wastewater plant. So, we would have another state law that would regulate that if that were an issue.
So, are we doing that with the existing ones?
Um, there are a couple of brick and mortar that consistently pose issues for us that we work with, um, uh, routinely to challenge that.
But the ones that we would be grandfathering, they are, they are also a part of that state inspection, and we make sure that they remain compliant. Okay. All right, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, I want to go back to the term "mobile." If they have a connection to be in a permanent location, that would mobile food vendor fit their characteristics?
Well, I think that's what we're looking for the policy on. So, the, the current, the pilot program was written to where you could do the pull-through. It also had requirements if you wanted to park on a site. And so, that's what we're looking for the policy direction on. How do you want to handle those? Because we agree, once you park on a site for a period of time, you're no longer mobile by definition.
And what's that period of time?
That's what we're looking for a direction on.
And what's that period of time, council?
Glad, I have, I have another question, just, you know, for other issues that we've looked at through this code. You know, just because signs are my thing, I'll talk to you. This sign's going to be grandfathered in, but if they have to do up to 60% maintenance, they're no longer grandfathered in. So, let's say this truck is sat next to Mayor Pro Tim for two years, but if it decides to move and do something else, or bring in a new and improved truck and park it there, will it no longer be grandfathered in?
Oh, good question.
So, I mean, I just think if you're going to make rules, you need to make, you know, define them as, as possibly can.
Alan? Are you grandfathered in with that, that use at that address, or do you want to not answer us right now?
We could put a percentage, maybe, like they are the sign. If you improve more than 50% of your truck, you're no longer grandfathered.
At this point in time, there, there are no state regulations preempting what we do regarding temporary mobile food vendors, how we choose to define it or anything. I was reviewing a memo that we wrote to the city back in February, where all we really did was compile the most common things we see cities doing that we could document. Cities are all over the place on this issue. The reason I tell you that is to highlight the fact that this council has a lot of discretion from a policy standpoint on how they want to define "mobile" or "temporary," and those sorts of things. And different cities have come to different conclusions on that. If they didn't have a, if they weren't authorized to do it when they did do it, the city manager is right, that is a non-conforming use that's allowed to continue. We even define when that non-conforming use goes away. But, but they had to have been legal at some point in time for it to even have non-conforming use status. So, if they were never had, we never allowed them to begin with, they never had a right to go there. Even if the city didn't enforce its regulations, it doesn't give them legal status to continue, which means they were nev, they can't be grandfathered tomorrow if they weren't legal yesterday. Does that make sense?
So glad we're talking about this. That's very helpful. So, we have no idea if the ones that exist, so this may be one of those where we got to come back and talk about. It sounds like there might be a little, a little bit of research on the grandfathered ones. Council, is your opinion that if there was a time that they were legal, and I don't know exactly what that means, that we want them to be able to continue? Or is anybody wanting to shut down the non-conforming? I, I, I think that's not a good place for us to go. They're here now, they're non-conforming, they're allowed to stay.
I would like to come up with an avenue that makes them legal.
Gives them an opportunity to be legal.
Here's what we need, here's some steps that you can get there, we don't want to overlay that town.
Right. And, and we got to be compliant with state, we got to be compliant, because what we're concerned about is, we don't want residents or tourists coming and having problems because they're not properly cleaned, or they're, and we don't need to have a problem with our new wastewater treatment plant, because they're discharging things they should not be discharging. So, um, I, I think Councilmember Rogers, uh, Mr. Jones, I think that's super good direction. We would like an avenue for the non-conforming uses to become compliant, even if it's just only these few grandfathered ones. But we, we got to, we want to get everybody in the fandom, and, and get them compliant, and get them consistent with the inspections. Their lights are on, and I'm calling on them a lot, but are you, where are you guys on the do not, what? Councilmember Peterson has suggested, "Mobile means you are not connected to water, sewer, and electricity moving forward." Are you a yeser, and you agree with the Councilmember Peterson, or you have a different opinion? Councilmember Jackson?
I disagreed earlier, um, because, but we were saying we're going to grandfather. If we're not going to grandfather, I would definitely agree.
Okay, so, if we grandfather the existing ones, do you want to allow people in the future to do it?
If they apply for them, I think they would have to... They would have to apply for them from the future on.
Okay, but they can only apply for it if it's allowed in the code. So, you want to allow people with non-brick and mortar to attach to electric, water, and sewer and run a restaurant?
Yes, because as I said earlier, there are people that can't afford brick and mortar.
Okay.
And the water is, water and all of that proclamatis and safety and health reasons, I think is important.
Okay, Councilmember Ennis?
I've already answered this once, but yes, I agree with Councilman Peterson, and no, I do not think they should be.
Okay, and I'm sorry, there's, there's a lot of conversation. So, I got Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Rogers, Nelson, and Ennis agree with Mr. Peterson. Is that, Councilmember Peterson, is that where we are? So, Councilmember Jackson stands alone. Do we need to move to the individual consideration portion of it and have a vote on this, so that staff knows what to put in, we need to have a policy vote, so staff knows what to put in the code for us to consider on October 22nd? Because I can't vote in a workshop.
I, I don't think that's necessary. I think the feedback that staff's gotten tonight is sufficient to go to the next step.
Okay.
Okay. Can I ask you to go back on the screen before we get off the food vendor? This is another subject that I'd asked of them, the, their hours of operation. Most of the, the codes that we've written have been market-driven, limiting them on when they're going to be open. Any intelligent business is going to close if they're not getting any business. But I don't know anybody that eats a breakfast taco after 8:00 AM. So, um, I just think that limiting their hours would be a nuisance. Well, maybe I eat breakfast tacos all day, but I'm just saying.
Half your cabinet eats breakfast tacos at noon every Monday, Monday at a holistic.
Well, somebody's buying it for you early, though. Um, I'm just saying, I think that we should allow the market to drive that. I mean, if they're going to be openly, then you have a nuisance, our new nuisance policy would keep them from making too much noise. I just think that you're restricting them, if somebody wants to buy it at midnight, let them buy a taco at midnight, I don't know.
As long as they're compliant with all the nuisance things. You can't be disrupting the neighbors.
Right, that would just be good.
Okay. Anybody, so, and what, what hours are you suggesting?
I wasn't suggesting any hours.
They can, if you, if you're selling, you're selling.
And if somebody's buying, well...
To break, break the border. Right. I would like to think it would be the same.
Okay. So there's a proposal that the hours be, just like a brick and mortar, you can do whatever you can do, market-driven? All right, you got that, Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Awesome.
That is it.
Fabulous job. Council, is there any other policy items you wish to discuss, so that you can see it in the code that you review on October 22nd? Councilmember Rogers?
The only other thing that we didn't ever touch on with the signs is regulating what they say.
Yeah, well, that's going to be taken care of. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what, it was changed on some of them, it wasn't changed on all of them, so I wasn't sure if you were going to bring that question up, or should I wait till later?
No.
I never know when I'm supposed to ask.
We're good on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other policy discussion? Okay, I'm considering 5C completed. We will be having the first reading of the ordinance, will be on the agenda for October 22nd. If you have other things that you would like, if you helpful, if you would email the city manager, so she can send that to all of us, so we can come prepared to talk about it. Given the lateness of the hour and the fact that several of us are driving to San Antonio, the city manager has told me that 5A and 5B, we will talk about on October 22nd, so those are pulled and will be rescheduled for the 22nd. Citizen comments, is there anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am.
We are done with citizen comments. The consent agenda is consider action to approve city council minutes from September 24th, regular meeting, and September 30th, 2019, joint council and planning and zoning commission meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, consent agenda is proved unanimously, thank you very much. We are also tabling item 9D, the financial management policy. We will talk about that on October 22nd. We have two items that we are going to do, and we're going to get out of here before 10 o'clock. 9A, consider action to approve resolution number R2019-105 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, nomination of individuals to serve on the Bastrop County appraisal district's board of directors, and establishing an effective date. Council, you got a notice of the, I believe it's four names, if I remember correctly, that has been put forward. No one sent me any other names. I don't know what else you want to talk about. We need to vote as a city, because that's part of the rules.
Mayor, council, the resolution 2019-105 lists the four names of David Redd, Roger Emanuel, Bill Hector, and Dennis Snyder.
Thank you.
I just had a question about the residency of those four individuals. I don't know them all, and I just, I mean, not that it makes a difference, our votes are so minimal, that our voting, you know, won't make a big difference because of the number of votes we get, but it's important that we do try to support our citizens in the city.
Do you have other people that you would want to nominate?
No, I just was asking about the residency, if we know the people on the list.
The names came directly from the Bastrop central appraisal district and have been vetted based on whatever their requirements are.
I don't have any problem with the names.
Okay. So are you making a motion?
I move that we go move forward and accept the four names that have been proposed for this ordinance.
Second.
Or resolution.
So I have a motion to approve resolution 2019-105 from Councilmember Jackson, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion is proved unanimously. Resolution R2019-105 is approved. Our, we are now moving to item 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R2019-103 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an encroachment agreement with the Energy Transfer Fuel LP and Bastrop County in the city's Mayfest Park, allowing for construction of a parking lot for a community center to be built by Bastrop County, as attached an EXDA, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a filling cost, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will, we will do this very quickly. We worked at the county over the last three years to have this 150 bed shelter established, basically with the headings described, everything needed to know. You can see that's to the postsite, there's a pipeline that runs through there, and we were going to encroach slightly, and we, since we have the property, we need permission to sign, we need the city manager permission to sign, execute that document, it's that simple. We're also applicant on their EDA grant for the same reason.
Councilwoman Rogers? Any questions or comments for the state?
Where is the easement?[1715.82]